Let's call our June 11 meeting together. Our mayor had a responsibility that he wanted to honor tonight, so you will have to put up with me. How about that? Diane, would you -- no, sorry, we need the invocation. Who's doing the invocation for us tonight? I forgot to check on that before.
We thank you tonight, Lord, for the opportunity to gather here and to exchange our feelings, our ideas, and our thoughts, to be able to have the freedom that so many have given their lives for. We give you all the glory every day in Jesus' name. Amen.
If you'll join me in the pledge.
A pledge that leads us to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation, without borders, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mary Ann Rick. We'll do the roll call now.
Excuse me. Mayor Scoob is absent this evening. Vice Mayor Nye?
Here.
Councilmember Anderson?
Here.
Councilmember Whiting?
Here.
Councilmember Mallory?
Here.
Councilmember Marshall?
Here.
And Councilmember Grossman?
I'm here, too.
Thank you. We have a quorum.
Thank you, Diane. We'll do our scheduled announcements and presentation, and we have a life-saving award to Chad Krueger.
Jen?
Good evening, Vice Mayor, members of council. These are the good times. I like coming in front of the council. We hear so much about the bad things in law enforcement across the country, but tonight we get to celebrate a really, really worthwhile event. We're here to honor Chad Krueger tonight, Sergeant Krueger, with a life-saving award. And the facts of the case were on Friday, September 6, 2014, around midnight, Sergeant Krueger and his squad responded to Bobcat Trail regarding a 39-year-old male subject who was threatening suicide by gun. On arrival, Sergeant Krueger's squad set up a perimeter at the residence, and Sergeant Krueger was able to make phone contact with the subject who was seated in his vehicle in the driveway. After talking with the subject on the phone for approximately 10 minutes, the male agreed to exit his vehicle, and when he did, he requested assistance in seeking help with his depression. The gentleman was taken to YRMC East for a Title 36 mental health evaluation, and officers on scene located a .357 loaded handgun in the vehicle. Officer Cooper wrote in his report of the incident that while transporting the male subject to the hospital, that male subject stated that he had the barrel of the gun in his mouth, the hammer was cocked, and his finger was on the trigger. He stated that he was seconds away from pulling the trigger, and that the phone conversation that he had with Sergeant Krueger was the only reason he did not end his life that night. Sergeant Chad Krueger's actions in this matter are deserving of the Prescott Valley Police Department life-saving award, and I think the citizens of Prescott Valley and the officers of our department are fortunate to have officers such as Chad Krueger maintaining visual to keep them safe. Sergeant? First thing we have is your plaque. And your own version of the write-up and a gift card. So in the infamous words of Mayor Scoob, you have 20 minutes.
And use the microphone.
Hold the award up.
No, but I will. A man of many words today. First off, I'd like to say, give the compliments to my squadmates, the ones that were there with me. Really, they deserve the credit. Were there, beat me there like normal. But with any calls, I'll say this, is officers have to make quick decisions, and sometimes decisions such as this one. There were many different plan options, and it got to be made quickly. So obviously, with this one, Plan A was to have it go as it did. Constantly, officers in this department and on my squad that night, we have to consider a different plan, such as Plan B and C. What if the subject gets out immediately, goes in the house? Now what? It's got to be done quickly. What if he decides to throw it in reverse, drive down the road? That would be Plan C. And kudos to the officers of the Prescott Valley Police Department to be able to make these decisions and do an excellent job in doing so. That's all I have.
Officer Krueger, come back. I'm so sorry. You don't get off that quickly. Number one, we really want to thank you for not only your humble demeanor, but your professional demeanor in acknowledging your team. One of the strengths we have here in our community is the professionalism, regardless of whether it's a fireman, a police officer, our department heads. And we want to be humble, too, in honoring you and thanking you for epitomizing all that makes Prescott Valley Police Department heads and tails above many other police departments. And I suspect some of my council members would like to address you as well.
Well, I'd be happy to congratulate you as well. I think we're very proud as a council and a community, and we feel that our police department, including yourself, epitomize, I think, the professionalism that is required as part of your job and the lengths you go to ensure that there's a safe resolution to the, I guess, situations that you come across. And I think it's probably one of the safer communities, and it's because of people like you that we can say that. So we appreciate that, and congratulations.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I will. Sergeant Krueger, I want to congratulate you on receiving this award, but your training only goes so far. At some point, you have to make these split-second decisions, as you said. And, you know, the experience and being able to maintain a proper attitude and composure during a situation of high stress, such as you went through, was commendable, that you were able to handle it and talk him down, and basically save his life and, you know, bring it to a positive conclusion. So again, congratulations, and thank you for the service that you provide us.
Some of the best parts of my sitting on this town council over the last six years have been the times when we've been able to honor our police department. It happens regularly. We have an outstanding police department, and we certainly do honor each and every one of our members. And tonight, we honor you, and thank you very much.
I just am thankful to God for you being the person that he spoke to, and for the words you gave him to make that man realize that his life is valuable, and life is worth living. And thank you so much for all that you do.
Thank you. And again, I thank my squad who just left.
They got it.
Most of them were right there. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Stephen, did you say anything?
I'm kind of shy with talking, so I didn't know exactly what to say, but people like you are the reason that this place is amazing. I moved here with the intention of just going to college, and we ended up staying because of officers that are willing to put their life on the line every day and do things that go above and beyond what they have to. I mean, right here, you could have escalated and made it something that it wasn't, but you saved this guy's life. And that's what protecting service is about, and I appreciate it. So, thank you.
We'll move on to B, Chamber of Commerce.
Good evening, council. How you all doing?
Hello, Zach.
Didn't have to answer at the same time. All right. I want to thank you guys. I love it when you guys let us come up here and introduce our new businesses. And today, I have two, and I want to start it off with Care Patrol of Northern Arizona. Take it away, Mark.
Thank you. Care Patrol is a national organization that helps families find independent living, assisted living, memory care, and in-home care. We check the care and violation histories of the communities that we work with. We tour families to facilities, much like a Realtor takes families to see new homes. And our service is free to families because we're compensated by our national network of providers. Although my business is a franchise, I'm proud to say our franchisor is based in Arizona, so we are an Arizona business. And being national, we can also help families to move loved ones into Arizona and out of Arizona as well. So, thank you for the opportunity. If you need to reference us in the future, you can find us at carepatrol.com. Thanks again.
Thank you very much.
All right. And the next business I would like to introduce is Mountain View Auto Works. I've met a few of you. We had a grand opening barbecue that was held this past Saturday. So, to start off, my name's Dustin Tonason, and I moved to Prescott Valley and started Mountain View Auto Works, located at 8261 East Spouse Drive. We are your dealer alternative for all your mileage maintenance needs. We do full service from small repairs, like oil changes, all the way to engine and transmission replacements. Those annoying dash lights, like engine lights? Yep, we do all those. Full diagnostics to basically -- basically, we're your one-stop shop. I've been involved in the automotive industry my whole life. My father owned multiple shops, towing companies, as well as a NAPA parts store. I was a quick learner growing up and became obsessed with taking things apart and putting them back together. In high school, I couldn't wait to leave for work program and get hard-to-work in the shop. In my early 20s, I wanted to work for other auto companies and take my knowledge to a new level, where I then moved to Minneapolis, Minnesota, which was two hours north of my hometown. I built some great relationships with many successful shop owners and knew one day I wanted to own one for myself. Three years ago, I met my now-wife while visiting California. After the long-distance thing, I decided I would be the one to move because she wasn't about to move to the snowy winters Minnesota offered. Again, I worked for shops, which I excelled in, helped them grow year after year. I was very involved with the community, and they understood my passion for cars. Up until a few months ago, I did not even know about Prescott or Prescott Valley. The everyday life in the concrete jungle of California was becoming apparent. We would not be able to afford to raise a family here. After visiting with my wife's family numerous times, we felt at home here. I quickly looked into possibly owning my own business, and of course, the Lord was looking down on me, and he had his hand out and gave me this opportunity. Since a young teenager, this has been my dream, and it was coming true. So, I want to invite everyone to come check out Mountain View Auto Works. I promise to give you honest, family-owned automotive service. Our motto is "Our Family Helping Yours," and we truly believe in helping others, regardless if it's our day job or just helping someone in need outside of our bay doors. We hope to see you soon, and thanks to Prescott Valley for giving me an opportunity to open up this lifelong dream I have always envisioned.
Yes, give out a phone number.
Phone number 759-0606.
Well, gentlemen, we humbly welcome you, and your comments about feeling at home here is very meaningful to those of us sitting up here. Please know we didn't take that statement lightly. We work on that, and we care deeply that people coming into the community will have that sense. And we wish you prosperity and success, and thank you for coming before us this evening. Thank you, Zach. Now, we have someone here from Honor and Remember plaque to present to the town. Hi there. I'm sending Councilmember Anderson down. I've got a really bum knee, and I'm trying to stay off of it.
I know.
But she's been trying.
Thank you. If anybody's interested, my name is Paulette Maratoni, and I'm here representing Honor and Remember.
We need you to use the microphone so that it's picked up for the TV audience, please.
All right. Take these glasses off. My name is Paulette Maratoni, and I'm here representing Honor and Remember, which is a flag. And just recently, we finished up Memorial Day here in Prescott Valley, our first annual, and I'm looking forward to many, many, many more years of doing this. This is a plaque that we had made, saying that we plan on having Honor and Remember here multiple times in the years ahead, and we wanted to say thank you to everybody that helped us out. Mary Mallory, and our 305 flags that we had present at the city center, Rick Anderson for coming to our Memorial Day celebration and doing a wonderful job there, and Larry Tokowski, who made our dream come true. This was a dream of my husband's for quite a while, and believe me, after 42 years, I make his dreams come true.
Good for you.
So, thank you to the town of Prescott Valley, and I hope that Honor and Remember will fly high for the many years to come here.
We thank you so much for your enthusiasm and your excitement, and we, too, will look Come on, John. We have the singular honor here of giving a certificate of appreciation to John Mundelow for 10 years of service. I think he should get an award for putting up with me, because --
You got to share with all of us.
That's true. John is our water manager, and he's one of the most knowledgeable individuals, I think, in Arizona regarding, in particular, our area. And we want to honor you for your service to the community, for your dedication to the town, in addition to putting up with me. And I'm sure we have something to be read. Oh, no. Oh, no. Run, John.
Rather than having something read, I've got a comment or two. John, it's hard to believe that it was 10 years ago this week that you agreed to come to work for the town of Prescott Valley, and for that, we're very grateful and thankful, because you were, at that point in time, you were the chairperson of the Water Advisory Committee or the staff person for that. And it was our pleasure to recognize what you did, what your capabilities were, and then be able to bamboozle you to leave that organization and come here. And you think back to the 10 years and what you've accomplished in those 10 years. You've built a water budget, a water plan for the future. You have gotten Prescott Valley recognized as one of the premier Northern Arizona communities in terms of water planning, and that's on your shoulders. You've done this. You've also gotten permitted, which is no easy feat in and of itself, getting something permitted, meaning recharge basins, a task that took a very long time and a good deal more patience than what I have, and you accomplished it. And that's really good. And Laura Lee's right. You deserve a plaque for putting up with her, as do the rest of us as well. But nevertheless, you have done a great job of mentoring several council people over the years in water resources, which is no easy feat. It's a very complicated subject, but very interestingly, not only have you mentored council people, you have mentored and educated a community of 44,000 people about water resources. And you're able to take very complex ordinances and regulations and boil them down to simple English, including your crazy cartoons that you put into your presentations, which make things fun. And you have a knack. You have a knack for taking the complex and bringing it down to an understandable level and on a personal level. I know that you've got my back, although in Heathrow Airport, you were way back there when you had my back, when the security was coming because of that crazy award that was in the luggage that they thought was a bomb. And he had my back, but from quite a ways away, especially as more and more security people showed up. But anyway, John, it's been a pleasure, and I will never forget the look on your face when we are standing at a location, and all of these crazy Londoners show up, and you watched your first soccer game from start to finish in a crowd that was so tight you couldn't fall down if you wanted to. So, anyway, your dear friend, your good friend, and don't introduce me to any more hobbies that cost a doggone much.
Well, John, before you speak, I'll have Rick.
We have an appreciation award from the town of Prescott Valley presented to John Mundelow, in appreciation for 10 years of dedicated service. And of course, we're real timely on this, since it's from March 2005 through March 2015. We assume you've been very busy and couldn't get here till June, but...
And, John, here's your first emerald.
All right.
It's the Emerald City. I was in Los.
And, John, I didn't jump ahead and forget item D. John's been in jury duty for days and days and days, and I wanted to do a little something to get him out of here earlier. So, now, John, we would be glad to receive remarks from you.
Well, I mean, I can't tell you how much I appreciate the award and working here. When I came here 10 years ago, I was welcomed immediately as part of a team. It's been a great team to work with, council members, staff, everybody. It really is a great place to work. And, you know, people here get things done, and that's always rewarding. You go home at the end of the day, maybe a little tired, but you've done something, you know? So, and as far as boiling things down to their simplest form, that's really the only way I can understand them myself, so it's a necessary hard work. So, thank you. I appreciate
So, let's go back to the normal agenda, and we thank you, John. After a turn, we have new employee introductions, and we'll start out with community development.
We'll save the live cracks for John for another day, but we have a lot of fun people working here, and he has a wicked sense of humor, and I enjoy that, and I enjoy poking at John quite a bit because he takes it very, very well, and he pokes right back. With that, I'd like to take an opportunity to introduce a couple of new employees in the Community Development Department. They are not new in terms of new positions, but these are people that have come to us from various walks of life, and we're very fortunate to have them. We had a medical retirement recently, and we are very pleased to have Carrie Studi come from private sector to come to work for the town of Prescott Valley. And most often than not, you'll hear Carrie on the telephone when you call the Community Development Department, because we pick up the telephone. And likewise, we've got Russ Harsh, who is replacing Paul McCary. Paul went to work and got a promotion with Yavapai County. And Russ is a registered professional architect, so as a plans examiner, we actually have a registered architect as that plans examiner. So, I'd like them to come up and introduce themselves and have liberty, however you would like, Madam Vice Chair, with the time that you would like them to go into the depth of their background.
Well, I do have a gavel.
Vice Mayor and council members, my name is Carrie Studi, and I work in community development. I do answer the phones and do the administration work for the code enforcement officers. And my background has been in customer service all my life and sales, and I really appreciate the opportunity to work for Prescott Valley, work with Richard Parker, and the people in community development. The town is really an unbelievable place to work, and I look forward to a long relationship with everyone and a happy one. Thank you.
Thank you, Carrie. As you saw, 10 years is a short amount of time we honor lately, isn't it? So, we'll look forward to when it's your 10-year recognition.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Russ Harsh, and as Richard said, I am the new plans examiner. I've also been an architect, or I am an architect, been in the town over 20 years now, done a large number of buildings around town throughout the Quad City area. So, I've really enjoyed coming from the public side of the counter to the city side of the counter, and it's been an interesting learning process, and I have enjoyed my time thus far and look forward to a long career, as Carrie mentioned. I hope I can be up here in 10 years, accepting my 10-year reward. So, that's basically it.
Well, thank you so much, Russ, for bringing your talents across the counter.
Oh, you're welcome.
We're going to enjoy that.
You're going to get tired of seeing me tonight. Vice Mayor, members of council, I have three new employees I'd like to introduce to you tonight, and I really appreciate the opportunity to do this, because I think it's important for not only the council but the community to know who is serving them. And so, I'm going to start with Angie. Angelisa Lancaster-Winemiller, who goes by Angie, is our new supervisor of the police records section. She's originally from La Mirada, California, but moved to Arizona about 12 years ago. She is a graduate of Northern Arizona University with a degree in applied human behavior, and she began her service in the world of criminal justice in April 2005 with the Prescott Magistrate Court, and she worked there for 10 years. In March of this year, she came to work for us as our supervisor of records. She and her family live in Prescott Valley. She and her family live in Prescott Valley, and she enjoys spending time hiking and exploring Arizona with her husband and two daughters, 10 and 13 years of age. She likes to spend the rest of her time artistically creating, and you can probably ask her more about that. Her other family members consist of pugs, fish, and frogs, and maybe not necessarily in that order.
Get really close, Angie. Just pull the mic down.
Thank you. Sure. I'd like the first words out of my mouth to be, "I am proud and honored to work for such an excellent department." It's funny that John was up here celebrating his 10 years because I worked with him briefly at the Board of Supervisors. When he left, he not only left to a great town, but he also left behind some kindness for me. When I worked in his department, I was having a baby, which, she's sitting over there, and she's 10 years old. So, it was a funny connection, and I'm very happy to be working here. It's a very nice place to be, and this room is amazing.
We want to welcome you with the warmest regards, and we're going to enjoy having you here. And you have our permission to shape up whoever needs shaped up over there.
Oh, yes. Sitting in the back is my daughter Zetti, who's 10, and then my daughter Ally, who's 13, and on the far side is my mom.
Thank you for coming out to support Angie tonight. We're very glad to have you here.
Thanks.
Good luck, Angie.
Officer Chad Huber was born and raised in San Diego, California, and Chad had grandparents that lived in Prescott. And so, since 1994, and a young boy, he was always visiting Prescott Valley and Prescott area and was hoping actually to move here. He was previously, before entering into law enforcement, was a graphic designer for multiple nationally published firearm and law enforcement magazines, and that's where his interest was kind of sparked for law enforcement. So, Chad applied to the Prescott Valley Police Department in August of 2014 and began the academy in December of 2014. In May, he graduated from Northern Arizona Regional Training Academy and is currently continuing his training in our field training program. He and his family are excited for him to start a career in law enforcement and to establish their own roots here in Prescott Valley. Chad's been married for four years to his wife Jamie, and they have two children, two-and-a-half year-old son, Kason, and one-year-old daughter, Cameron. Chad does enjoy spending time with his family, riding motorcycles, hiking, mountain bike riding, and playing baseball. So, I guess he picked the right area. Chad Huber.
It won't buy you, and it doesn't carry a gun.
Perfect. I'll keep it short and sweet. My wife and I are really excited to be here in Prescott Valley and have this opportunity to work for the Town of Prescott Valley and to be able to, like I said, you said, start our family roots here. We're really excited and couldn't be more grateful for this opportunity. So, thank you.
Well, we thank you, and we agree you're in the right community for your family, for your children, but also for your career. So, we welcome you, and we shall look forward to other times you come before us.
Thank you.
Thank you for your service.
I have my father here with me. He's from San Diego. He's actually trying to sell his house, and he'll be out here as well.
Oh, good.
Hopefully, he'll be out here soon.
Well, we wish you well and that that sale happens soon.
And next is Officer Clinton Mathis, who is an Arizona native. He was born in Wickenburg, and he lived there until his freshman year in high school, when his family moved here to Prescott Valley. So, while he was attending Bradshaw Mountain High School, Clinton was a member of the Yavapai County Sheriff's Office Explorer Post, where he gained his interest in law enforcement. He remained an explorer until the age of 20, when he was hired by the Yavapai County Sheriff's Office as a detention officer over in the Camp Verde jail. After a year as a detention officer, Clinton became an emergency medical technician and worked for Lifeline Ambulance. And I believe, weren't you just involved in an incident coming back from Ash Fork?
Yes. Just north of Paul and Andre, or at the Drake Road intersection there.
Yeah, just to tell you, the training that these guys get, he was working in his orientation stage right out of the academy, and he was working with one of our detectives, and they were coming back from looking at something out in Ash Fork, and they came back on 89, and they witnessed a head-on vehicle accident. And because of Clinton's training as an AMT, he was able to render assistance. So, it was pretty amazing. You may see him again here soon. So, in continuing, Clinton was hired again with Officer Huber in December and attended the Northern Arizona Regional Training Academy and graduated in May, and he is now continuing his intensive training in our field training program. Clinton Mathis, congratulations.
Like my chief said, I was originally born in Wickenburg, and I was raised there. But when I moved up here in my freshman year, I fell in love with this town, and this is really what I consider to be my hometown. So, I'm just, I'm very proud and very grateful to be able to be a law enforcement officer in the town that I love so much. And I have today with me, I have my fiancee, Rachel. We're getting married in October, so very excited for that. And my mother came out with me as well, so.
We're glad you brought them, and we welcome you. And you honor us again with your remarks. You will just enhance this town and maintain the qualities that you came here to enjoy, and we'll look forward to it. He hinted we'll be seeing you again soon, so we'll be watching. Thank you very much for coming today, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor and Council.
Does anyone have any comments or communications? Then we'll move right on to the consent agenda. All matters under consent agenda are considered to be routine by the town council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately for discussion and possible action. A, approving the May 21 spatial council and work-study meetings in May 28, 2015, count submitting minutes. B, approving interim permit and person transfer to a Series 6 liquor license for Sidekicks Saloon LLC located at 6851 East First Street, James R. Martin Apo. Approving Upper Verde River Watership Protection Coalition grant application. D, approving an intergovernmental agreement between the town and HUSD to continue the school resource officer program for fiscal year 2015-2016. Approving the intergovernmental agreement with Yavapai County for unified emergency management for an additional five years. Rejecting all bids and direct staff to modify the scope of the treatment plant equipment storage building, CIPW 372. Approving accounts payable as G and H's department reports. Does anyone wish to remove anything for discussion? If not, accept a motion and a second to approve.
Vice Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve all items listed on the consent agenda by electronic vote.
I'll second.
Thank you. Thank you, Diane, for setting the vote. Okay, let's move on to number nine, old business for action. Number A is consideration of reading ordinance number 806, adopting by reference that public record entitled, amendments to section 1004 dash 030 fireworks on two separate occasions by title only, then place the same on final passage. Diane, thank you.
Do you have any questions? You're abundantly familiar with this particular issue, and so with that in mind, unless you have any questions.
Not the first reading.
Vice Mayor, may I suggest a motion be made then?
Go ahead, Mari. I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to read ordinance number 806, adopting by reference that public record entitled, amendments to section 10 dash 01 dash 030, fireworks on two separate occasions by title only, then place the same on final passage. Or motion not to read ordinance number...
I'll second the motion.
By second.
Thank you. Thank you, Diane. That is unanimous. We will move on to the reading of the ordinance.
Ordinance number 806, an ordinance of the mayor and the common council of the Town of Prescott Valley and Municipal Corporation of Arizona, adopting by reference a document entitled amendments to section 10 dash 01 dash 030 fireworks declared by resolution number 1919 to be a public record, which amends section 10 dash 01 dash 030 fireworks in article 10 dash 01 offenses in chapter 10 offenses of the town code to allow the sale and possession and use within the town of permissible consumable fireworks as defined by Arizona revised statute, section 36 dash 1601, only on certain dates specified by state law, providing that all other chapters, articles, and sections of the town code not herein amended shall remain in full force and effect, providing that if any provision in this ordinance is held invalid by a court of competent jurisdiction, the remaining provisions shall not be affected but shall continue in full force and effect, and providing that this ordinance shall be effective 30 days after its passage and approval according to law.
Thank you, Diane. We'll move on then to new business for review, comment, and possible action. A is consideration of approving the amended memorandum of understanding with NACOG for the continued implementation of voucher transit system through fiscal year 2015-2016.
Just a second, Vice Mayor. I've got a few...
Okay.
Vice Mayor, Council, before I get started, John and I were laughing in the back. Both of us had been here about 10 years ago, and we were laughing. We didn't have to use these readers when we were here 10 years ago. So, he holds his hand up and says, "What?" So, yes, always happy to be here, but yes, some things don't change. But moving on, John held up his readers too. So, neither of us could see from the back because I couldn't find where my presentation was. So, I fumbled around, but I think I'm ready now and ready to go. What you have, the item we have before you, Council, we did talk at work-study last week. It's a longstanding relationship we have with the Northern Arizona Council of Governance, or NACOG, with our transit voucher system program. You heard from Vicky Mastriani, who administers the program for us, and the great value this particular program has. I talked with Council, too, that there is a need out there for transportation, and our transportation studies tell us that about 15% to 20% of our population, as high as that, needs rides. And NACOG is a very good organization to find out who those ride-needing people are and actually getting them the rides for basic services, doctor appointments, job search, and a lot of that's a leg up. In fact, as we're talking with Vicky, some of these people, they're not on the program forever. They just need a little bit of help during a time of need, and then they don't need the rides anymore, so they're off on their own two feet. So, longstanding program. Dr., we really want to applaud Council. This particular program started UCU State LTAF funds, and it's been Council's direction to continue funding the program. We're in year four without any funding from the state. So, Council, you've seen it as a priority, and we're very happy to continue the program with NACOG to continue to administer rides. And, you know, we're in our 16th year. Talked about this current year's program to date, but got about 125 ride recipients, so there's a need in the community. And in addition, we talked about the transit voucher program, and of course, here's our website, which we can have brochures at some of the human service providers. They can do that. Or, of course, you can always get on the website in order to pick up information about how to get to this. And this does have direct links to the NACOG site. So, we do have our particular new website, and we keep those links updated. So, what we're asking for tonight is continue this program into the 16th year. NACOG administers it, does a great job, and it's a wonderful relationship and gets those rides to that transit-dependent community out there. With that, be answered any questions of that brief introduction.
I have a curiosity question. Are we the only community left in the area that is honoring the NACOG voucher? Are other communities funding it? Because at one time, everyone did.
To my knowledge, we're the only ones that's been the last two or three years, the only community that has continued on with vouchers. And it's, of course, been your goal, Council, to continue with the program, but it's, to my knowledge, the only municipality here locally doing this program.
Well, speaking just for myself, it's a point of pride. We're a community that cares about our citizens, and this is one concrete way for us to take care of them. Do we have any other questions or comments?
I'd just like to say that I see this as a very valuable program for our citizens, you know, and that many people that come to where I work use this program, and it gets them around. And I appreciate what the Town of Prescott Valley does. I appreciate what you do, Norm, and sad to see a lot of times as the state continues to not share the revenues. Thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to share, you know, our appreciation for your leadership, Norm, because I think it's been 15 years, and there's been times where we've allocated more or less. And now, I think our community and citizens are very grateful that we're able to continue this for the last three years. So, I'm grateful as well that it's still functioning and hope to see it in the future unless something changes, so.
That's a good comment. You know, the way it's shaped, the transprofessional tells that transit builds over time. You've got to have the reliability. It can't be up and down. That need builds over time. And as you can see, even some of the particular cab companies locally provide that service. And I think, as Vicky pointed out last week, that they put right on the side of their cab, "We honor NACOG vouchers." So, I think they have certain times of service areas that they can provide maybe a better rate. You know, that's between them and the cab company. But local cabs provide this fair, and, you know, really is no unused equipment and/or service there with a direct need of the cab serving this community and taking them right to their destination, basically door-to-door.
Thank you. Are there any further comments or questions?
I have one. Of course, we recognize the need, we all do, in the community. But the one thing I wanted to mention was the fact that NACOG does an outstanding job of documenting where the money goes. It's clear, it's hard to read that particular chart, but I know they provide us with the documentation to show us how well they use that money, and it is an outstanding use of the money that we provide. And I just wish the state would see their way clear to recognize that need too, but we can only hope for that, so, thank you.
Councilman, that's a good comment. You can see there's five or six different categories, you know, counseling, basic services, you know, getting to the grocery store, as Councilwoman Mallory pointed out, but even job search, counseling, just basic services, whatever that can mean. And, you know, even medical, you know, how do you get that medical appointment if you're down and out, if you're not well and working? It's a wonderful program to get to that transit-dependent community out there.
Well, it's an honor for all of us to sit here and be able to honor this program, and now I would accept a motion and a second.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Mari.
I'll make a motion to approve the amended memorandum of understanding with NACOG for the continued implementation of the voucher transit system through fiscal year 2015-2016 by electronic vote.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. Thank you, Diane. That is unanimous. We will move on to B, consideration of approving change order number four for the final Consideration of approving change order number four for the final as-built adjustment to contract college for the total amount of $37,913.18 for the Enterprise Parkway CIP number E364.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Now, let me get to my slides to be current.
Sure.
This next item you have before you is for the Enterprise Parkway project, and just a little background, keep in mind, this was initially a longstanding job generation area, it's been in plan for many years, and of course, what we're lacking, we had some access from the north through Valley Road, but the Prescott Valley Economic Development Foundation was able to apply for a grant and actually get an award for $500,000. And basically what it did was provide better access to this industrial park for job generation, actually new buildings. So pretty simply, I think, we've been to Council several times in the past, we've added some of the projects, we did have, the biggest thing to point out is the wonderful partnerships we had with all of the stakeholders in this particular project. We talked about Prescott Valley Economic Development Foundation, Fagan Signature Group with donating the land, the rough grading that was put into place was a significant contribution in the partnerships, and the Arizona Commerce, that's what they looked for, they looked for partnerships and buy-in, not just gimme, gimme, it was like, there was lots of stakeholders there, and investment made by many people. And we can't forget Arizona Department of Transportation, they helped expedite this, expedite the signal installation, and we worked with their staff and really had a wonderful project out there in order to open up the Enterprise Parkway, which was really an extension from the north to the existing enterprise that came from Valley Road. So now we've got direct access to Highway 69, and the big advantage, too, is this is an existing industrial area, as it continues to grow, we've got immediate safety enhancements with the use of that signal. All the trucks that use this particular area for the industrial buildings up there do use this route, so it's at a safe signal. So we've improved safety significantly, that's the biggest payday we got right up front. And what's going to grow over time is, of course, the job generation and the access to all the properties out there for job generation, which of course is one of the Council's goals, is to generate jobs for sustainability here in Prescott Valley, so a very, very good project. Of course, I always like to show these particular slides when you get to the point of you're actually cutting a ribbon, so I think you may recognize some of the folks there, but a lot of the project partners and people that showed up that day, but that's actually picture the ribbon looking down towards the signal when we had the ribbon cutting ceremony here a couple weeks ago. So project is altogether complete, we've just got a couple small minor striping items to finish up when the weather allows, but where we're at today is, on any project, we do an as-built quantity capitulation. So with some of the interface with ADOT, what we do is, there's a few project enhancements we like to do, a few changes to the plans, when you have an ADOT plan, interfacing with them can be challenging at times to get hopefully what they want in place. The beauty is when we cut this ribbon is the project was accepted by ADOT, and we met all the criteria, which can be difficult for a signal, there's quite a bit. Into one.
Gosh.
So with that, we're always doing as-built quantities, so there was some value enhancements out there with some paving that ADOT required. In addition, we did some extra seating, and actually we added some chip seal outside the original project limits, just to bring wholeness to the project, because what I do want to point out, this was paid at the competitive unit bid items, and ultimately, what we do have is a complete job, and it's, and it's within the budget. So what I'm here to, to ask you is to approve the final as-built quantity capitulation for the amount of $37,913.80, and we will call this project complete and very successful. Any questions I can answer?
I just had a couple of comments, Norm. I was looking at our picture there, and I remember when Marty had those scissors, and I was making me awful nervous there with those scissors, so I had to move down the line away from him. But the other thing I wanted to let you know is that I wish the state could do as well as you did and the group of people that came together and got this project done. I mean, you guys just put your boots to the ground and you got it done, and you did a fabulous job. And I happened to run into County Supervisor Jack Smith today, and he brought up the fact that he just is absolutely just amazed at how when you get money, you spend it, you get the project done, and it's, and it's ready and it's going. And, and you are an excellent, excellent person with your job, and I just love the way that you just move forward. Appreciate everything you do.
Thanks, Councilman. I don't do it alone, there's lots of good partners there, not only internally, but throughout, but yes, we've realized great success for the local contractor Asphalt Paving Supply with Dave and Associates doing the design and those longstanding partnerships, and I guess ultimately what we all look for is, we all had fun out there. The contractor did well on the job, but you can see lots of smiling faces, and when a project goes well on time and on budget, there's a lot to be said for that, because everyone had their contribution, had fun doing it, and that's what I think we're all in the game for, if you do what we do, and people that help support what we do in Public Works.
Thank you for mentioning the partnerships, because that made the biggest difference of all, a smooth transition from planning to concept to completion. Do we have any other questions or comments?
I just had a comment. I, I too thought that this project specifically seemed like it was, just began and it ended, and so, you know, obviously, it was, it was done in a very efficient manner, and in my past life, involved with hospital construction, you know, you see change orders, and this is a very small, you know, I think, consideration that you would expect other things to occur that might warrant other change orders, but obviously, it was planned and laid out, engineered in a way that it was most efficient and done, and gosh, I still am just blown away as far as how quick the, the new road had been put in place. So congratulations.
A good point, Councilman, why don't we, too, too, the point of the change order is actually just, you know, adding a road and connectivity with the Academy Way. So Council did move forward with that, and that's where some of this, you know, not only did we make the connection up to the north, but we made a connection to the west, to the existing property, which makes things more, more safe. So we were able to work with even the private development community to look at the value of that, and we've participated with them, and I understand we're going to pave here in a couple weeks and adding more pavement and infrastructure out there in the form of the development community building their requirements for Academy Way. So got the momentum started here with the roadway, which is, you can see what happens in projects, and even during construction, the momentum where we added to the project by connectivity, and even the scope expanded a little bit from originally, and that's all good stuff, because I really look forward to this area turning real quick with new building construction and job generation, and you can see it, those that attended the ribbon cutting ceremony, we already saw the truck access going that way, much, much safer, and it's being used.
Any other further comments, motions? Go ahead, Mike.
Madam Vice Mayor, I'd be happy to make a motion. As to approve change order number four, the total amount of $37,913.80.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you, Stephen. You're Diane, and that is unanimous. We will move on to C. Consideration of awarding each annual contract to the lowest responsible bidder per the unit prices bid, the roadway material to Asphalt Paving and Supply, Inc., Asphalt Paving Contractors Specialty Paving and Grading LLC, Annual Street and Park Contract to Asphalt Paving and Supply, Inc., the CMP Culvert Contract to Contact Engineered Solutions LLC, the Solid Waste Contract to Best Pick Disposal, Inc., and the Portable Toilet Service Contract to Patriot Disposals, Inc. You're busy tonight, Norm.
Yeah, Vice Mayor, I took quite a bit more time and liberty last week to really explain each one in detail, and really what my effort was, was to show, you know, we're, we're spending the public dollar here very effectively and with good value. By rebidding these materials each year, we stay in tune with what actually the commodity's cost is, and what it does do is it lets competition, or really find out who is the best at providing this particular service. So I went through, some contractors got to work again, but as you saw last week, there was a couple of these particular material contracts that it went to the, another lower bidder, someone had a sharper pencil willing to work harder. So as always, we bid these yearly, and we use these contracts extensively and spend up in a neighborhood of half a million dollars throughout, but, you know, using the private sector, who's got the best price and the best service to provide these particular services for a myriad of things we do in Public Works, in addition to supporting other departments. So very good stuff, so I took time to explain it, and I don't choose to do any more detail tonight, if Council just so desires, we can just answer any further questions you may have. But we talked more in depth about each particular item last week and what we do throughout the year.
Right, thank you for sharing that information, because we don't want our audience to think we haven't really gone through this in detail. Are there any questions at all? Then I'd ask for a motion.
Motion.
I'll make a motion to award each annual contract to the lowest responsive bidder per the unit prices bid, the roadway material to Asphalt Paving and Supply, Asphalt Paving and Supply Contract to Specialty Paving and Grading LLC, Annual Street and Park Concrete Contract to Asphalt Paving and Supply, Inc., the CMP Culvert Contract to Contact Engineered Solutions LLC, the Solid Waste Contract to Best Pick Disposal Incorporated, the Portable Toilet Service Contract to Patriot Disposal, Inc., by electronic vote.
Thank you. A second?
Madam Vice Mayor, I'd be happy, second.
Thank you.
Madam Vice Mayor, let me just say that in, in my olden days, I would have made you do each one of those separately.
Well, you had me nervous there when you spoke up.
Well, I, I just wanted you to know that I've been beaten down over the years, and people have said, why don't you just let all of those go through, and as long as, of course, they're all fairly small and everybody feels good about them, and there are no controversies, we could do that, but if there were any concern about any one of those, you would take it off and deal with it separately.
Thank you, because we do want to be very appropriate in our considerations, and we thank you for those comments. Okay. All for the vote. Yeah. Thank you, that's unanimous. Thank you, Diane. Let's go on to D. Consideration of approving change orders with Bennett Oil Company for fuel services with Kohler Enterprises, ADB, Kaler Land Works Maintenance for Landscape Services, Traffic, sorry, Traffic Safety, Inc. for street striping services, and Tytron Enterprises LLC for street sweeping services, and with Clean Team Janitorial LLC for janitorial services. So, again, you were kind, and we thank you. Do we have any questions or comments? Then I'll ask for a motion in a second.
Madam Vice Mayor, I'd be happy to make a motion to approve change orders with Bennett Oil Company for fuel services with Kaler Enterprises, just lost our.
Yeah.
With Kaler Enterprises, also known as Kaler Land Works Maintenance for Landscape Services, Traffic Safety, Inc. for street striping services with Tytron Enterprises LLC for street sweeping services with the Clean Team Janitorial LLC for janitorial services.
Thank you, Michael, a second, please.
And I will second then.
All right. Thank you, Diane, that is unanimous.
Thank you, Mayor, Council.
All right, let's move on to E. Consideration of authorizing the submittal of grant application, U.S. Department of Justice, DOJ, Office of Community Oriented Policing, COPS, 2015, COPS Hiring Program, CHP, application, CFDA 16710. Thank you, Chief.
Good evening, Vice Mayor, members of Council. I have before you tonight, I seek permission to at least request a grant through the Department of Justice for a COPS hiring grant. I'm sure you've read the RFCA, but I want to explain a couple of things. In the first paragraph of the RFCA, it says additional consideration is given for efforts to address homicides, gun violence, homeland security problems, and things like that. Those are areas of the grant application that would be given special consideration, but that's not the only thing. Also, SROs, School Resource Officers, are given consideration as well as traffic, and so I think we have a strong case for, for either or both of those areas. This is a three-year grant with a mandate that we maintain the staffing for one year beyond that. It's a 75-25, we have a 25% match on our part. What the grant pays for is salaries and benefits, it does not pay for overtime, training, or equipment. So with that, if you have any questions, I will try to answer them for you.
Yeah, I had one, one question, that is, are we anticipating the number of officers or staff personnel that would be affected by the grant, in terms of funding? Does that, is staffing included, or? Because I noticed in your other application there, I think you stipulated three that would be impacted by.
I thought this didn't say three, it's supposed to be three as well. It's based on 5% of total, of our total force right now, of our total sworn, so based on the number of sworn we have right now, the maximum we could get would be three.
Three, right, okay.
So it'd be three again as well for this.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Other questions or comments? A motion and a second is called for then. Thank you, Marty.
I'll make a motion. Motion to authorize the submittal of grant application, U.S. Department of Justice, DOJ, Office of Community Oriented Policing, COPS, 2015, COPS Hiring Program, CHP, application number CFDA 16.710, by electronic vote.
I will second then.
Thank you. Thank you, Diane, that is unanimous. Let's move to F. Consideration of authorizing the submittal of grant application, U.S. Department of Justice, Office of Community Oriented Policing Services, COPS Community Policing Development, CBD, grant application, CFDA 16710, added 6-10-15.
Good evening again, Vice Mayor and Council. I think I was just here, wasn't I?
Well, you did look really familiar, yeah.
Before you tonight, I bring, again, I ask for permission to apply for a federal grant through the Department of Justice, it's another COPS hiring grant, different, different requirements and standards for the grant application. This one is primarily community policing-based, and the, the caveat is partnerships, and so it would be our goal to, if, if we were awarded the grant of up to three officers, we would create a community policing unit, and they would be responsible for the entertainment district, the retail section along Glassford Hill, the hospital, the community college, NAU, and the complex here itself, and that's based on partnerships, and that's what they'd like to see in these grant applications, is the partnership, especially with nonprofits and higher education in this particular one. So this is a two-year grant with no requirement for, there's no requirement for another 12 months, although they would like to have a commitment to do the 12 months additional, and it pays for everything, there is no match on this, it pays for everything, and that includes salaries, benefits, equipment, and training.
Nice. Wow, we like the sound of all of that.
Yes, me too.
Any comments or questions?
No, I just wanted to mention that I'm always grateful to see the departments, and especially the Police Department, that step up and, and seek out and pursue grants, and it does help, I think, our community and helps our budget, of course, so we appreciate your, your leadership on that, Chief.
Thanks, and I'll be honest, this goes a lot towards my responsibility, towards our budget, and as we look to grow the department and grow the town, it was my promise that I would continue to seek alternative funding whenever possible, and this is one of those occasions. And to be honest with you, if you look into the future, and we are anticipating further growth of the department, in my opinion, that's really the only time that these grants make sense.
Well, we honor you for keeping your word and your commitment.
We'll see if we get them.
Would it be safe to assume that these officers that we're going to, we would have under the grant would be the same officers we'd be looking to add to the department in the future?
Correct.
Okay, good, good use.
So that's the, that's the beauty, and that's why I say, this is the only occasion in my experience where these kinds of grants make sense, is if you're anticipating growing, then let's get some help from the federal government to help fund the upstart of that, as opposed to, we need these officers for a couple of years just to help us get through something, and then it doesn't happen, and you end up having to lay them off at the end of it, it's not fair to them.
Mayor and Council, we've used these types of grants before, and the department has been successful in some of these applications, just depending on the.
been successful in some of these applications, just depending on the focus of the grantor. And every grant that comes forward, they seem to take a little different focus, and we have been very successful in domestic violence grant receipt, things like that. As the Chief and I have talked, you know, this will, if successful, this will count towards future staffing, but what the advantage is, we get them for three years for free or near free.
Right.
And so we're able to advance that cause. It's all good when we're able to do these things early. As far as the grant match, that will end up being gotten from the Police Department budget in one way, shape, or form to make sure we do this, and it's a net gain for the department for three years.
Sounds good.
All right, if there's no further comments or questions, I'd accept a motion in a second.
Madam Vice Mayor, I'd be happy to make a motion to authorize submittal of grant application, U.S. Department of Justice, Office of Community-Oriented Policing Services, or COPS, Community Policing Development, CPD, grant application, CFDA 16.710.
And I will second that.
Thank you. Thank you, Diane, that is unanimous. So that brings us to 11 comments from the public. Consideration and discussion of general unscheduled comments from the public. Those wishing to address the Council need not request permission in advance. Any such remark shall be addressed to the Council as a whole and not to any member thereof. Such remarks shall be limited to five minutes unless additional time is granted by the Mayor or the Vice Mayor. At the conclusion of the unscheduled comments, individual members of the Council may respond to the item addressed at the discretion of the Mayor, or they may ask the town manager to review the matter, or ask that the matter be placed on a future agenda. And we have several people out there. Come on. None of you have a question?
They won't come up at one.
Yes, well, we thank you, and we will ask for a motion for adjournment and a second.
I will be glad to make a motion to adjourn.
Madam Vice Mayor, I'll make a second.
Thank you very much. And thank you all very much tonight for the service you render our community, please know how appreciated you are.